Perfect. Well...
Chiki chiki. Chiki chiki. Our Afghanistan Union Party. Looking at the police country, Jack. Who's that?
Hmm.
Come on. I think China might be focused.
I've heard you say that China has resources of our own, so we can do anything. China has resources. We can use them to destroy our country. If you want resources, you can use them to attack our country. And if someone wants to attack our country, they can use our resources. And they need a power man. You say a power man can support our country, shine the light in Nigeria. And if he is in our country, he can fight in Nigeria. Therefore, we have to help him and try and...
Action!
We have to help him. And then we have to... We have to help him. And then we have to help him. And then we have to help him. And then we have to help him. What's my name?
Take it back, John. You know, my name is... My name is... I don't know what you mean. But I'm here. I'm here. I'm here.
Action! Action! This is...
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here. I'm here.
Take it back, Jack. Take it back, everyone.
Action! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action!
A A C! Take it back! A A C! Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action! A A C! Take it back! A A C! Take it back! Action! 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 A A C! Take it back! Action!
I'm here. I'm here.
I am not here. Not to knock, I say.
A A C! Take it back! Action! Action!
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you. But, um, before, um, I think... Is there anyone here in the house who can give us the reasons of our national anthem?
No, let's stand up.
Okay. I understand. Alright, so go sit in place, that's all.
Omahulu! Ayelele omahulu! Omahulu! Ayelele omahulu! Bie yé lúwa kí loba kí loba kí líé olá lobi. Olá lomi loba kí loba kí lóha noma. Gùnùn gùnùsèwe dèn gùn dèn gùn. Lo yé sì ní loba noma. Omahulu! Ayelele omahulu! Bì loba oye ni ba ebeje. Nùba oye ni ba ebewa. Olá lomi saka mili oso mili. Oso mili.
Omahulu! Action!
Nice presentation of the Ash Abu Akhatri. Abu Akhatri, look one. Please always give a round of applause for him. Thank you. And, um, this is the, um, the person we have all been waiting here for, President Aspira, for African Action Congress. Thank you so much. I would like to again go, um, a kind of a little repeat about his profile. His name is Obor Ale Shoré. He is, um, 47 years old. He had his, um, primary and secondary school education in a state. And then he proceeded to University of Lagos to major in geography and he graduated in 1995. And... Take it back, the political movement. Owa wa esipe awa nipati. And in Toshewankwa la, okonkeke, omo bekon, kinkoto leda. Aripe awata jawala ti ilekono, tonja de foreb ni, as of assembly ni, kusipa okotoko fowa. And fi, o, otoka like ni pe ki awasi le woka ma be, woka ma fowa 1000, 2000. Yageni kewa goni kwa la state. Atuwa impelu. Ata bampele ni ayende wo ulukore. Omo omo aloni omo kwa la, kusinkoto niwa fùwa ofa. Toba losi lue ofa loko mama akon. Tieni timba shofa definitely iwo mashe. Owa jomilejpe awatoko tajorun jor ye. Owato ya konso monso, okon prezi ya o, o no she juwa, kino she. Awa yo, o ba wa yo. Owa demoto wa. Shebo ya konde moto wa tele, she wa omo pe ki, yua omo to ya wa ki, awa security wa ni ofa tele. I share o ni, si o no she ba she kofowa, awo omo omo she wala, o she alono she fua. Eto wa to ya konsefua ni o shefua, omo ada bigpe awanu ni o shefua. Kibo solo, awa YouTube iteni, okon esni prezi. Awakon no, pe awa dubelo, pe bati shede shede, osari bigoto wa. She wa omo pe ya konde moto wa. Omo elepiti ni jor ye, niwa du kapjes, no solo. O ni o ye ki ama niya o no giwa. Ineta ni owa no fwa, pe boko toba she, omo openi awa shewa niya anu. Security, uh, keni wa borrow security bros, owa ba kino bisheni le. Nto ya konbishi wa she, awa omo to, amotan to ya konpe wa non ye, ope wa. Ewa okon esni niwa. Kila niwa fù, la inpe inkoto ti baghe, oti baghe, ewa niwa. Awatoko wa ye non, ni owa libyo, kimi skiti damama, ba 2020 nela, 5050 nela, lawa wa yo. She ya konrepe, eh, so. Yageni kewa, ni kwa la state, inteba losi not, uh, kwa la not, emo pe yageni kewa la kota, inta lero no, awata wa ni kwa la south, awa na tumpa no. Fù diye i, inkonkono niwa, ode fi yageni kewa. Adela omo inkoto ya pe, owa eshi ti, owa eshi kwa la no tuwa, ode eshi kodada fùwa, nita ta ba nita. Tieni omo akon ni kwa la lebi, toma lota, oju mama ti, toma ni kuli bo de tuwa, o, ife ta okwa la, shebo pa le. Eh, ife ta okon pe kwa la, let's why mama claim another state. Because what if bank oja ni le. And what if bank oja le pe, in tange she, o she du tan she si, o she du owo, o ni afi kewa. O investi ni, teba di bu fùwa, owo ye ni, oka bada, into ya konsefua she, to niwa la po o banki. Awaziwa as no wo, ampè awa yo, ni pe goda ko, tolo kobe da fùwa, ta abesi, ente mo, pe feshin koti ulirekuni ye. Fù diye i, awa muboa, toba mo wa, ede ka ba, isenomati, ikonwa ni, ede ki akba, eto wa ni. Owa shefua, okonke pe as, to ya konsefua non ni, asko, election asko ibadi bu, ede komo wa ka ba. Ote to no wa, awa ofa, ni bava wa ye, ya wa ye, ba ye, ya bùlu, ede ki ataki ati su. Emaje ya tole pe, 50,000, 20,000 toma fùwa, awa, in tiwa ti yato ti kewa, ni ofa ye, ya iti bo ye. Asko wa tola ti bu nela, ede ke, amonti an she, eshe ongon. Thank you so much. That was a very good welcome to our people here in Africa. So, um, I would like to call on, um, Dr. Ty Obor Koye for a welcome address.
Oh, President Aspira. Itipu odi aje. Edjo beni, ka, ni asbu, oya mala ti, ochi duru pe. Uh, when I come, uh, there was. There was. Ma wekomoa tofa tofa. Ni duri pe, ikena nisiwa, pe amulewa kwa la. Pe amolewa si kwa la, ki amondi ofa. Kanti reponaze pe ta, ta nave koi story in Nigeria, ta ba fi ofa si puti komplexe. Atu dubelo wa yep. Uh, ino asinu pe, afitve, fifive, afika, ina niye ye, eshe. Nti ensi si, odo si de baghe. Atu dubelo owo e baba wa, akini bulé, asiki inkabo, ye eshe, olo ne duri ndelaga. Okuwa omo ina yusu reyo. Okuwa wa ta ne amia dada, la ti wekomo, uh, there was, ti, tiwete, atu dubelo wa yep. Okuwa urumba iswa diolo, olo mosi e dedi, eshe on, ekabon.
Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action!
Thank you very much, doctor. Take it back!
Action!
Take it back!
Action!
A A C!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Action!
Thank you very much. So, the next on, um, our program here is, um, the, the reason we are holding here. The, um, reason all of us are gathered here, I'm going to call on our President Aspira, Mr. Obor Ale Shoré, to give us a short speech. Action!
Action! Take it back! Action!
Take it back!
Action!
A A C!
Take it back!
A A C!
Take it back!
Please have a seat. Um... I would, uh, be speaking in mixture of English and Yoruba because of, uh, our audience seated here, Yoruba people, likely. But we also have an accompanying audience on the internet, all over the world, who are here watching what we are doing. So mopeki ye baba wa, ye ya wa, ye ya bùlu wa, emo wa, omo di, eh, ni lofa. Eh, ekabo sule to wa lumi. Ki atuwa si, town hall meeting, nibi, ati losi, odo kabisi, ati odo professor, oya wa ye. La di no kiwa. Amo katubele to ni, mopeki adide, uh, fùwa omo yo, tiwa pa, ni banko, ni lofa. Who's that you call? Here me, omo, tiwa pa, tiwa ma pa da, lenye, outo pa mo.
Take it back! Action! Action! Take it back!
Uh, iti mo deso be, ni pe, jere lofa, oje yu to, jere loba takene, Waras states. Ben oni, loni, atu ko pa wa, yu to wa de Waras states. Amo ilui jere, ni to jere, to she patata, to jere pe, oh, fi lo unle, to ni motiri era wa, ofa. Olo, olo bu, omo te lo koroba, amo ome parawo ye, ofe onko. Omo ta wa she was millioni, uh, ni pe, ni no kwa ra. Waras state in general, oje ni oni nun Nigeria, yoni tole ke, awa moni si. Abimobaro?
Yes!
Amo omo wa ni di joba, ni no kwa ra. Awa moni si ye, inba ti oro, baro bishele. Ta olo pashe investigation, odi amonni si noni, investigation tunlo. Pe awa ni wa she she, i be ye. Eh, ome zogu be ya, o, o le jale, eh, oti tobe, tole tole jale. Eh, tole tole jale, la ti kekele, toma da ba, ni oma de, amo ba no oma di. Amo imo, ada, okoton ko fa wa, odoni ba election. Owo tiwa foku wa, ni morini biti wa ti she, arm robbery ni, ofa. Awade sope, ni pe, the case of arm robbery, oni statute of limitation, that is pe. Tiwa obati yara, yo ba de mu o si, oba orase kini, oto, oto la. Amo, di jobata wa fesi, di jobatuwa, no, o ni fone unle. On ti... President Obor, African Action Congress. Kato da, ebe esile, ati da, movement, president Obor, take it back. Take it back, oshimepa kwele, that is she, ni ulile de Nigeria. Amo kosi, biti wa tiwa wa, ulile de Nigeria, noni la, oshimepa kwele.
Take it back! Action! Take it back! Action!
Eh, la ti di pe, adjuvi, eshe mu wa ye non, miya non, leave America. And tiwa Obor si Barack Obama, mbakun soro, take it back, no, no kosi, niwa adjuvi tole tole soro. And ni pe, idea, eh, to, oti to, bossi, e no, e ro, ayi, ayi mu jana. Tiwa Obor si internet, biti mo to, niwa ju, leni, olu komi, omo ye le, Shoré.
Shoré!
Omo se wa ye. Ni muti, mba, nija, la ti ja pe, toyin, la ti bati muti wa ye, omo du, omo du, University of Lagos. Titi wa di si. I won't, iti ta tinja, takunta kun, to noni, yé, owa kwa ra ye. Di biti ta tiriya, oto man jale, ni banki tele, tiwa nje koba no ye, tiwa nje senator ke. And ni pe, la ti da, ilu apada, lawo mo.
Action!
La ti she rapada, ofa, Waras states, ati Nigeria, la ti odu tomo. So what I'm telling you brothers and sisters is that, it is very easy to talk about making roads, hospitals, you know, bringing education to our people. But there's something even more different that we must do. We must start having difficult conversations. In baba wa, da is only fe, alisopfe, amapweni, evo son, ilé welfare, or no. I didn't madam born, la ti, agashay, poli ni, o no you doubt. I'll do that, omo omo inje. Adi omo ba dokoni, arao omo ropon, arao omo ra diye omo.
Ewa omo!
Omo se wa. Take it back!
Action! Action! Take it back! Action!
Sorry, omo kowe, oni pe, di topo domi, idro si, ebe nsi. Oto ma shele, sa, oto ko ome ni ke, osi si ba.
Ewa omo! Ewa omo!
So, amo, la ye.
Ewa omo!
La i be ya, omo omo shele, siwa, la te iwa, la i be ya o, aleni no siwa di. Omo to di shele, no ulile di na, toliwa ke, tokon tokon, ta wa, no ri shili shi or no. La i be ri fu, eto, awala wa da ebe, asko ti ba to, kaka inle, ni no iya. We iya i, oti to, oba ina ramu, oba ino la ramu.
Take it back! Action!
Oba ino la ramu. So, we...
Ewa omo!
La lo sope sefu arima. Eshe mu ha.
Eshe di wa.
Eshe.
Take it back! Action!
So, we got di bo fu, ebe A A C. Monsieur, aré ni koni, afet jere, awa no afet jere, gominor, kwa ra, eh, be si. Afet jere House of Rep, afet jere Senator, afet jere Local Government Chairman, afet jere Councilor. Bo bo ye, and your daughter, badm interest. Four muti wa, oki she four million naira. Amo ti, eh, toba go ra four muni, four million naira, la ti jere House of Rep member. To ba di be, she luka ma ronti ini. Ode ronti ini.
Ode bi ra ko.
Odi pi ohi. Odi bi ra, odi bi ra kana. Dana ABC, ati to be di be.
Action!
Take it back!
Action! Take it back!
Owo i ti, oti jono niye. So, ah, di daola ye, la ti ma piwa, da para, omo do, tiwa she election, la she, mura wa, la she kurawa, aswa di leni. Pe ka, ka sowa po, agimo, po, kanyo, odo, to ba le, to ulile di she. La ti jere, ulile di wa Nigeria. Ola she was millioni. Amo, omo ma da le shefui, no ri shili she, ti o she she, monsebe formafui niwa 1000 naira. Liba election ni koni, eto... I, ni pe o she she, be any ti o ni, ti omo yo si, okay. Ole Rosley, win tori, biti mba, sorry, inba ti mo, she jumped, to mo Rosley University, mi omo yo, fò fò. Agba ni mini mopi, or, ita wo, ti mo passi, mopi one University of Lagos. Ole ni i, osi, ente le Romo Rosley wi. La je pe, omo koba no, abu omo ba, abu omo general, o si ni ko. Ote wa si o mimo, ta le mu, damasota fe we, no ri le di ino. Osi le we, iwa omo kekeke, osi le oso, ba omo ni to lo new, abe yo toba, ni re we si. Oti ba omo, inu jere, oti so ine olà, oti so di ahoro. Ola wa she ni pe, epe wa ma she, igapada. Ola fe, ma, tabasopfe, igabwa wa to koyo ba ke, tabasopfe, odo le she, emasopfe ba ke, gabada. Odo le she!
Gabada!
Odo le she!
Gabada!
Let me switch over to...
Time of you!
English language again, that. We are approaching you from a different angle, brothers and sisters, our elders in the house. Our political party is here to change Nigeria for good forever. And what we are set to do is number one, not to be afraid of anybody. That all the people that have destroyed this country don't deserve any respect and we cannot respect them. They belong elsewhere, not in government houses. Anybody who has stolen resources that is made for the education of our children, the health of our city, the highway for our own access and integration, money made for agricultural production, money made for security, electricity, infrastructural developments. For reason, we are going to take our country back from them and we are going to choose one of our own competent person to run this country for us. And that is why I have presented myself on behalf of our party. I am aspiring and have not become a candidate yet. But I hope to become the candidate of the A A C. To challenge these people, the people that have destroyed... Anyway, for the serious note, that is why we are come today to Africa. And also commiserate with the families of those that are three persons innocent of our individuals who were innocent, who were voted by people who were harmed by our politicians. And like I said in Yoruba, there is no statute of limitation for a crime against violence and incapability. We go anywhere we want in Nigeria. And we have the intellect to describe what we want and what we need.
Next year, 2019. You can see the energy in the room. We did not pay anybody to come here. They came on a revolution because they wanted a better country. And since we started just six months ago, we have become widely known across the world as the most progressive and most determined and focused political movement in Nigeria that has now become a political party. So, yes, the revolution has come, and it will happen next year. Let me just briefly describe our plan of action to you before they come and lie to you about it. Already, they are stealing those ideas, but there's a difference between the originator of an idea or the imitator of an idea. We are the originators, and we are very original in content and character. The imitators can only be what they are, barouf. Our plan of action, ten in number, number one, is that we must secure this country. And where is a better place to talk about security than Ofa? In Nigeria. Number two, we are going to provide power, electricity. Where's a better place than Ofa? There was a time, I think I read, or I reported on Sahara reporters, that Ofa did not have electricity for how many months? Six months. My brain is still very fresh. Yes, because I did the report, I was reporting on it in those days. Six months. Roads, infrastructure, where better place can you promise it than Ofa? Look at just between Yassel, Epo and Ofa town. I think it took us about an hour. It should not be more than twenty minutes under normal circumstances. And we promise you, not only will we fix that road, but it will become a dual carriageway when we come to office next year. And we are going to fight corruption. Where's a better place to talk about corruption? The people of Ofa are victims of the worst form of corruption perpetrated in Nigeria. Right there in the Loring, by the people that you said came from Ogun State. You didn't hear it from me, that we consider that... It is very interesting that we also don't have an economy that we call our own. And we bring about an economy that will benefit the people of Ofa. What do people in Ofa do? Most of them are agriculture, right? In Quara State here, Quara used to produce sugar, basita. Is it basita? Bashta, aha. I remember when we were secondary and primary school, they used to teach us about bashta sugar company. Today, there is no even a road linking bashta. We have gone round this Quara. Some of the worst primary and secondary schools are based here in Quara. Am I lying? So you have become victims of the worst form of corruption. The people who are stealing your money, one of them had a wedding for his daughter in three cities around Nigeria. Had one in the Loring, had one in Lagos, had one in Abuja, and I saw ahead they had one in Dubai and London as well. But the people of Quara cannot afford three square meals per day. They have no roads, they have no hospitals. If you go to a Loring, that is even the capital of Quara State, is the worst capital city. And the reason is because you have been cheated. Also, one of our plans is restructuring of Nigeria. And when you hear restructuring, where is the better place to talk about restructuring? Ofa. The reason is that the Oba, the Olofa of Ofa should be a first-class Oba in a restructured Nigeria, right? But they won't let it happen. Open, he's a first-class, but you know how they treat him. Because I had to do a story on the Olofa of Ofa when they were planning to remove him. Because he was not doing their... Sorry, I wanted to correct that, he's a first-class Oba. But you know there are first class of first class. Aha. Well, they are not, they not allow you to the inner room of the first-class Oba because you are treated as a second-class first class. So everybody in Nigeria deserve a restructured Nigeria. If Nigeria was restructured, what had happened in Ofa, killing thirty-three people, may not have happened. Probably would not have happened because you have your own police that would not have turned their back on their people getting killed. For four hours, there was no response from the Nigerian police in Ofa. Then after thirty-three people were killed, they were shedding proper died tears and bringing armata to Ofa. If the armata was there before then, why didn't they release to you before the incident happened? Not only were they shedding proper died tears, they had the audacity to accompany themselves to the palace of Olofa with some of the people that carried out the killings. What an insult upon injury. We got him on so, so far near our house, spicy hits, and we're programmed to have a she left for corn at the Bay Nigeria today. The answer please, number one, the security, we need Ofa here. They deserve security to Omo Roko. Power, electricity, and all... Wedding, of course, to the billion Naira. That's a wedding for your home. She, the money to the billion Naira, they show no, you, cashing the dual carriageway, one day, they are pushing a bad day, did you ever, one motto, on the corner, no comment, no matter if you don't pay that, that is Loring. On Koyi Loje, our neighbor, that's a new way, our manager, we are talking, the village, they were, on, we do right, that's what I want.